Right, it's nine zero four, nine oh four. Meeting two quarter, policy for partiness. Notice of the meeting was probably pushed along. And item number one is. Motion to approve the minutes of seven, seven twenty. Motion in the second, I want to favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item two. This is discussion possible action. The Oklahoma County Employee Handbook, including potential revisions and changes. We had. Yeah, thank you Cassie for doing this. I had forgotten about it, but we had the draft that we received. From the DA in our meeting on May twenty second. Now that was just for the minutes. That was taken from ACO, it was looked over by the District Attorney's Office, Lisa. And it was brought to us with. Sidebar notes that she had included, if you have that, if you have it in Word. You can pull it up, I'm not sure if you do. But we can pull that up, so it has sidebar notes. To say this is a policy decision. She did some things, I think were, Lisa was assuming certain things were policy. Here she is. So those are things, those are the gotcha things that we need to look at and discuss. What, I asked Leanne, Professor Leanne Hines, by the way, this honorary doctor, you can't school music. She, I asked her to look it over as best as she could in a shorter time period than probably she wanted. To go over and look at grammar and all the stuff that she did. So, that's what item two is, the version, the second version was. Eight twenty two. And sent to the clerk's of the boards, so. If we can, put those up side by side, what I'd like to do in this meeting. And I know Aaron's got fifty four items.
Are those breakdowns of this eight twenty two version?
I don't believe so, so the eight twenty two version is with your notes?
Exactly.
So mine is working off the draft that Cassie lost somehow.
So we've updated it since then?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you have your changes tracked though? Cause all my changes are tracked and. When I put it into Legistar, I P E F'd it, so you can't see them on that document. They are all tracked, so we should be able to see.
Well, what I'm trying to do here, cause item two is specific to. Five twenty two and eight twenty two. We can, after we get through this item, look over. Your changes. Because we have to compare it to what I believe to be the more accurate. Document, cause you didn't know what I was doing and trying to get it to make sense. So to be fair to you, you were in where what else? I'm attempting to produce a cleaner version of the handbook to look at. So certainly understand your effort and appreciate it. And we'll get to that, so. I'm a big fan of short meetings, this one will not be. So what we're trying to do. For the rec. Take a hundred and twelve page document, that was pretty antiquated. Up to date, but it was a little verbose. And we're trying to carve it into something that makes sense and leaner, cleaner, cleaner, more modern. Handbook to conform with other counties across the state. Yes, we're the biggest, and we wanna be the best. So. There we are. So if we can pull up. Five twenty two and eight twenty two, let's do that. Let's screen it.
I, okay, what am I doing here? I've got.
Okay, so you have the one that the DA sent, so you'll pull up the one that was. Over there.
While we're killing time, middle of the weekend, I was at my mother's. We had just redecorated their house, bought new TVs and all that. And they're smart people. And so. She and her husband, she's aging. And her husband, woke used sticks and Amazon. I tried to explain to them. More TVs, you don't need those sticks. And to try to teach them how to program everything, but the passwords, isn't that to me? Ten hours. Get them proficient at it.
And they help us set up all their streaming accounts?
Yes, five different TVs and five different. And. I tell you. If you ask me to do a split screen on this unit right here, I would know how. It's. Technology that's available. Escapes me sometimes. Can everybody see that?
No, it won't. Yeah, cause it's in, cause it's in, she doesn't have a DVD on that laptop, so it won't. Cause it's open in Chrome.
Gotcha. Chrome didn't do that, all right. By the way, had software and you designed a cover and you get to choose that, so thank you for doing that. Making it attractive. So page one's a no brainer, we're gonna decide how to cover here. Page two, go ahead and scroll down.
You went past the contents.
Well, no, I do want to explain. On the table of contents, I have not verified if those page numbers are accurate.
Right, the last thing you did is you came up.
Yeah, so everybody knows it, what I do want to do, and hopefully you all would agree. Is for the benefit of elected officials or employees or family members. I do want, once it's a page number, hyperlink that when it's available online. So people don't have to endlessly scroll through these things, so. If you all agree with that, I want that hyperlinked, and there's ways to do that. And we're gonna hyperlink it once we verify that each page is accurate, so let's scroll through the table of contents. And we're gonna get to. The Employee Personnel Policy Handbook Acknowledgement form. See, on the left. Customized. This is your handiwork on the left, correct? And on the right is the cleaned up. Version, so more clean version. Does anybody have an issue with that? Any changes?
It looks good.
Everybody, Aaron, does this, were there changes that you had tracked in here somewhere?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm proposing to remove the personnel policy portion throughout the handbook, so I would just read Employee Handbook. Rather than Employee Personnel Policy Handbook. And so that in the title and the first paragraph and then. Also throughout the handbook adding War Department Head, where we reference an elected official. And their rights or powers, if you will, since about a third of our employees don't have an elected official.
Comment? Well, I just seem to recall there's some sections in there where we wouldn't. Where it gives discretion to elected officials, that we wouldn't necessarily want to impart that type of discretion onto the department.
Sure, and I think when we walk through paragraph by paragraph, that's kind of where I thought we can determine what makes sense. But I think for. This, like a department head would retain the right to terminate their employees at any time, blah blah blah.
Yeah, I was just commenting because.
Like throughout, yeah, throughout the entire handbook. And so in most places, I do think that it will make sense, but we can get to that. Past page one. But I do think for this. Document, it should include War Department Head.
So. Let's see, one, two, three, four paragraphs down, correct? Each county elected officer, and then add War Department Head? Is that correct?
I'm assuming when you say the department head, you mean the V O C C department head, not the department head within an elected official's office.
Um, a department head without, that's outside of an elected official's office, so for example, the jail. CEO, the juvenile bureau, right?
The jail, the jail's a trust, it's not a bar.
Cause jail is a separate legal entity.
The Oklahoma County employees that live in jail?
No, they're, no, they're general employees.
Okay.
Yeah, so the re department head that I know of, the kind of official that the answer to would be V O C C department.
Um, juvenile bureau.
V O C C department. Their V O C C.
They report to the state district judge.
They have the elected official, they, but they're, they're employee in county and they're reporting to the V O C C. The judge out there, it hires, it's statutory, it's all statutory.
Yep, similar to the election board, the secretary of the election board answers elsewhere, but it is by statute, the V O C C. Is there, there's not an Oklahoma County employee that doesn't report to an elected official, right? I don't, I don't know, I can't think of one. If you're under the Oklahoma County umbrella, I don't think. I think everybody holds a lid. That, that's, that's kind of my feeling, either you're directly reporting to the elected official in your. In your organization, or the only department heads that I know of that are not like a. You know, in an elected official's office, it's the department head over their finance or whatever. All of those others are V O C C department heads, technically they report up to, answer to V O C C, which is comprised of elected officials.
Uh huh, what about the public defender?
Not.
Statutory, it's not, they don't follow their.
They don't follow this handbook.
Are they not Oklahoma County employees though?
They're Oklahoma. They're, it's statutory. It's statutory.
Are you saying that this handbook doesn't apply to them?
No, it does not.
Okay, so the jail, it does not apply to the public defender, what about juvenile bureau?
Yes.
Well, the juvenile bureau.
But it's V O C C.
Yeah, it's a V O C C department.
Um, I would just be interested to nail down that answer, because I do know that the director statutorily reports to the state district.
Oh, the DA's office is telling you that these are V O C C, well, they're V O C C, I mean, I'm telling you, this is the.
So is there an elected official then that Mrs. Dix would report to, that you would not allow her in this circumstance to? Like have the, this discretion, like who would she ultimately go to, who would the elected official be that holds these?
Free commissioners. If that's V O C C, free commissioners. There are some areas with juvenile where the presiding judge, it's assigned from an administrative standpoint, from an administrative side. Will guide and direct that, but it's a. It's a quasi judicial situation, but it is a V O C C.
Sure, I just wanna make sure that we're covering everyone, because like when you get into some of these things, like the comp time for overtime agreement, like you are gonna have the jail employees sign that?
That's, the jail employees have nothing to sign this handbook.
Right, they're trust employees.
But they, if their payroll is processed through our payroll office and the county clerk's office, then they do.
They tend to have to follow it. You're, you're on.
But they do have.
I'm just telling you, you're, you're not right on the jail, the jail is a separate, it's a trust. Even now, then before, if the jail trust gets dissolved, then you would be right, they would be part of this.
Would they be a part of that, be a, be, the sheriff's office?
Right. Right, right.
So is it appropriate to put elected official slash V O C C department? If there's gonna be department head, I would think that you would put V O C C that way, it's clear that, oh, I, I work for the sheriff and I'm the department head over this department within sheriff's office. No, this isn't the discretion of that department.
Right.
Because they, they're in an elected official's organization. So yeah, I think if you're gonna add department. The V O C C departments have, do V O C C departments have the ability to hire and fire outside of V O C C? Generally, V O C C's, at, at least this is the way it was when it was. V O C C tries their best to stay out of the downline employment decisions of department heads. And V O C C will get involved generally when it's related to an employment issue with the department head. Or maybe one of the very, very, very senior staff in that particular department, but by and large, all those decisions are made by the department head, so. They, they go through county HR? Yes. Okay, okay, at least they're supposed to.
So we have a county manager now too, as well, that's strange. The county manager of the V O C C department has now reported her, she reports directly to the V O C C.
Okay, so are the law library, drug court, retirement board, pharmacy and V O E also, do they also report to V O C C?
Pharmacy, pharmacy is part of the. So they're gonna report to V O C C department. What were the others?
So law library. They don't, they're not, are they, but they are on our payroll.
They're, they're not, it's like many.
Just like the public defender, they just, they employ paid on hand, just contracted.
In V O E, there is one member of V O E that's appointed by V O C C, correct? One's the judges, the other one's.
Yeah, but that's a, that's a separate board.
I'm just trying to help here.
Yeah, that would, wouldn't be, this, this handbook is not a, it's not implied to retirement.
It may be helpful for you all, and a lot of people do this for an organizational chart, this might be an opportunity to think, I mean, if we are sitting in this room. Not sure what the V O C C umbrella really looks like, maybe we should just do a organizational chart, a lot of people do that. And put it in there so that every county employee or every public member can see. How, how, who reports to it. And that, and that way, that might answer all your questions at once, if you can get a chart together, and then you can see the workflow and. If you need that chart to have where the statutory authority comes from, the county handbooks are really good. Those county handbooks from O S U Extension do a great job of explaining all of that.
Yeah, I think if we can link back everyone to the elected official that we're talking about in this handbook, then that makes sense. And that's, so for election board and drug court.
Election board, yes, drug court.
Drug court's like another pass through.
Where it is a statutory, state created entity that's a hybrid, it's made up of a public and a county, and the county is just a pass through. It was part of a bigger picture, and then election board reports to.
It's a V O C C.
V O C C.
Tell everyone in agreement, throughout the handbook, we would remove personnel policy. Create an org chart. And. The elected official slash V O C C department.
Do you see anything problematic with removing the personnel policy?
We don't, we have a separate policy. Separate policy.
If the intent of this is to, I mean, it, it's a handbook, I, I get that, it's, it's intended to be number one, personnel policy. Depends on what you wanna do with how you wanna meet the auditor on this. Because each individual elected official can't have their own separate operating personnel policy and then an overriding county policy that are in conflict. Now, you can have obviously internal personnel policies that govern the very specific jobs you do, for instance, it's very important for, for, for the sheriff's office to have. Their operating policies that govern their particular things, but overall, like. This is like the overall, you know, all encompassing, all encompassing policy.
The umbrella.
The umbrella.
The big umbrella.
So it's useful to have that language. It, it's up to you, I'm not gonna tell you one way or another, I'm just gonna say, what is the purpose of this policy, I mean, it's a handbook. What are you trying, what message are you conveying to your employees, are they gonna think that this is a personnel policy, are they gonna think this is not a personnel policy? And it doesn't matter if it's in the title, I mean, it has the effect, but like I said, what is the auditor gonna think? Are they gonna accept this and don't follow the personnel policy? I mean, it's, that's clearly a personnel policy, whether you put it in the title or not.
Right, as long as, as long as the whatever issue is addressed, I would think, I'm, I don't, I'm not gonna guarantee a hundred percent, but I would think that. An auditor would be okay with that.
Yeah, and what's the purpose of taking it out, what was the, that was gonna be my next question, huh? That was gonna be my next question.
I'm just sitting here, I don't think it ever really entered my mind when I was going through this earlier, but there's probably no need to say employee and personnel, it's just kind of redundant. Now that I'm sitting here thinking about it, you can say one or the other, but there's really no need to say both.
Was that the thought process behind it, was that it was just redundant?
Yeah.
That's fine, I mean, like I said, it's not, it, it's clear that this is what this is, I'm just saying, I don't know whether the title matters when the conflict comes.
I think if you're gonna take one of those words out, employee or personnel, you would take personnel out and leave employee, that way it's clear that personnel, you could say would be. You know, some of these other entities that we talked about that are passed through, but they're not employees of Oklahoma County, but maybe they're personnel. That way it's clear that this is applying to the employees. I think with it saying employee personnel, it's clear that it's talking about employees, but I do get the redundancy. But I wouldn't leave it just personnel policies, I would do employee policies.
And you know, policy and handbook are kind of redundant. Handbook is policies, I, so, now I'm thinking, I just didn't really look at that before, I just think that is kind of, but.
Somebody said something earlier though, do all V O C C department heads report now to Jessica? Is that?
I, I never defer to you guys, because I.
Was that the V O C C's policy? When y'all put that out?
Yes.
So then why would, I would normally think that department heads, I think we put elected officials or the county manager, right? If, if the box tops with Jessica.
If the department heads do ultimately report to her, and then she reports to V O C C.
Right, but I'm just, I'm, just because she's kind of out of, outside of my organizational structure, I didn't know how that, how she fits into the piece. As it relates to V O C C department. Yeah, and that, that changed after I, so I don't know exactly how you guys are running that, that piece.
Yes, that's essentially how it's done.
But is, is Jessica operating similarly to way, to the way that. Policy and governance used to, where they would bring some of the day to day decisions? The hiring and firing and just, you know, your, your regular stuff, the department is still making those decisions? Or are they taking all of that stuff to, to the county manager before they make any of those decisions?
I think really, I've been on a case by case.
Yeah, because if they're still, if they're still. Yeah, because if they're still, if they're still doing, making those day to day decisions, hiring, firing, all of that, then you would wanna leave.
They would need to, if somebody wanted to, like hypothetically say, John Benefits wanted to hire somebody, he's gonna, he's gonna bring it to Jessica. But if he says, as long as he has a case for hiring somebody, she's not gonna say no.
She's in the loop.
She's in the loop.
But who's making the decision?
He would be the one making that decision.
Yeah.
If they're the one making the decision, I don't. This is the one I had.
All right, so, trying to sum it up, I think you tried to do that earlier. We're going to take out the word personnel from the headline at the top, the bold, and then the employee first paragraph, copy of the employee policy handbook.
Do you not have that one that you added to?
Well, I'm kind of doing it, like. Um, then we jump down to paragraph four, third line down, county elected officer or B O C C department.
That should be throughout the entire, that's mentioned obtained times.
Okay.
Except for the places that you haven't visited.
Right, as we go through.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
Add important.
And and, and somebody would, I would think the county manager. That's the bar, yeah. Okay, uh. We'll take a motion on that, good lord, we're on page four.
So, let me confirm unless you're gonna, so again, it's to remove the word personnel, add an org chart, and then change it to say elected official and or B O C C department head?
Just, yeah.
Or.
Are you all opposed to just calling it the employee handbook, you do wanna call it the employee policy handbook?
Yes. We can always, and just, if, if, let's say the auditor says, no, you don't need the word policy in there, we can always. We're doing it to make sure that who has that as well, and our lawyer has a rule with us, correct?
I, like I said, I I, it's clear when I read it, this is what it is, the name is not very relevant.
Yeah, our current handbook is called the employee handbook.
Yeah, I think there's all kinds of handbooks that we have, and like, I think policy is what this handbook is about, right, I mean, you could have a handbook, you know.
On the change of our.
Exactly, yeah, all kinds of different things, um, I think the policy in there describes what this handbook is, so.
So is there a motion?
Uh, one more.
All in favor, please say aye.
Oh, I'm missing.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Reluctantly.
All right, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Page four is in the book. And keep in mind, this is a living document, handbook committee does not go away after, not even if we ever get this to the budget board. Eventually, I think, does it go to B O C C as well after budget board? So, it is a living, breathing document, there are changes in state laws and federal laws that can affect the handbook that happen every year. All right. Page five. This is the, please read carefully, please place some copy in the fourth first number, this is where, uh, I think there was a questionnaire by you that's going to, they don't, we don't need their social security number.
Yeah, unless there's a reason that you do.
I would think if we have duplicate names, you know, John Smith, stuff like that, you might need an identifier.
Maybe an employee I D number?
Do they get that when they first get hired?
Um, not, not that way.
Once they get put in the units. It triggers the I D number.
Good. So, would everybody agree with, uh, Aaron that we don't need social security?
Wh- what is that section four for the social security number?
Comp time agreement.
Oh, comp time, okay, so you mean like, we wouldn't collect the social security number at all?
No, it's on other, like, documents, it would just be on this.
Okay, I was gonna say, how would you verify alias? So, okay, I just, I, so just for the comp time sheet, yeah.
All right, so we're gonna delete the word social security in that one. Thank you, Aaron.
Okay, Jane.
Five. Anybody have any other problems with some of the changes, if you'll look at the cleaner version?
Don't keep talking all night.
Sorry. I have to redo the whole thing.
That's it.
The one that you sent me.
Right. So we're deleting in the first paragraph, social security number, okay?
So we're taking out social security and we're taking out personnel?
And are you doing this on item two or item six?
We're still on item two.
Okay.
I'm trying to make sense.
Aye, I see what you're saying.
Aaron, I I would encourage you, if we're on a page that's noted in some of your stuff. Bring that, okay, if we're on a page, just a little aside, but, but we're listening to your recommendations, so. All right, so is there a motion for eliminating social security number and the word personnel?
Some moved.
But it's in there twice, I believe.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion here.
I'm sorry, I don't think I heard everyone. So, Mr. Buchanan, how did you vote?
Aye.
All?
Aye.
Randy, aye, Leanne?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to page six. And eight twenty two, document.
Why, man? They switched sides. No, why? Okay, I don't know. Same things, they just switched sides, sorry, I don't know what's here, but. We're up there.
But keep in mind, I want, just as a reminder, the red strike throughs and stuff like that were, uh, Aaron's suggestions.
What? Oh, there?
On the right now.
Oh, that's not, oh, that that's not.
No, it's.
That's yours.
Yeah, so this one.
I I'm sorry, I meant Lisa, excuse me, Aaron.
Okay, yes, but this one is the one from the D A that we received originally, and this one is the one that we, and Mr. Cannon had updated.
That's all.
That probably generally takes into account the things on the right, like, you'll notice like the left, they're gone, those things are gone.
And then occasionally, as we reach Aaron's topic, I'm pulling that up in addition.
Thank you. And there's a little, on the cleaned up version, there's a ten in there that I didn't make it black and font style, it's my mistake. Does anybody have any problems on this page that you would like to discuss?
Eliminating personnel again.
Okay.
For a paragraph.
Can we just make a blanket?
Yeah, I think so, we'll just. Does anyone oppose that, or is that kind of the majority opinion we didn't want to make forward?
From the entire handbook.
As it related to the employee.
Rules, defining, when it's referring to itself.
Yeah.
The title.
Yeah.
And I think you've already, it's a question, you've already modified the title, so wherever the title appears, it will be the modified document you got.
Thank you, Lisa.
Um, another blanket throughout, I would, um, move that we, um, cite statute the way that they do on O S C N, sort of this like Oklahoma stat dot in. Um, just like the statute number O dot S section.
And are you also recommending a hyperlink?
Um, that would be great.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that would make sense.
Yeah, I would like to hyperlink the statutes as well, when we do this. That way, an employee doesn't go in and type, does the state statutes, if anybody has copies, books, states and stuff. A lot of stuff, look, if you look it up online, that seems to take, it'd be good to have all these statutory references hyperlink. Is anybody opposed to that? To hyperlink the statutes? We're all in favor, correct?
Right, right.
Right, thank you.
This is probably anti procedure, could that be an excuse for a moment to go get my paper copy of this?
Sure.
This is not letting me edit.
Yeah, what will you add?
Thought it would, I'm just gonna run upstairs and run right back, I know right where it is, all right, okay.
All right.
So sorry.
We wanna take a little five minute break if anybody needs water or something, okay.
Um, I'm sorry, I, Aaron did motion, uh, to to make the change of the state statute, just like state statutes.
Oh, I'll pick it up when she comes back, cause she'll have.
Okay, okay, do you, do you want to go ahead and recess?
Yeah, let's recess. All in favor, say aye.
Uh, I'm sorry, I need a motion in a second.
Motion.
Go ahead.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Thank you, thank you for keeping this straight.
Thank you.
All wagons, don't you bring them down.
Any, is there a motion to reopen our meeting?
Some motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
On, Betty, go ahead.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. So have we gone to page six?
So we left off on, um, page. Page six, yeah. Move that forward.
Okay.
And was there a motion? How does it say what?
Um, she had made the motion and.
Yeah.
Um, just said to bring it back.
Yeah, most, so my motion is to, um, throughout the handbook, update the statute reference to match the way that statutes are cited on OSCEN. Which is, um, how it's done there with the dot S rather than that header.
Yeah, and hyperlink it. Would that be also be part of your motion?
That can be your motion. My motion is just to, I do agree with you. You know what, I'll end motion to hyperlink it.
I'll say it.
All in favor, please say aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Those carry. Okay, no more changes on that page?
No more changes from what? Any?
Are we, are we gonna go through the items? That's what we're doing. Are we, yeah.
We're going through every page.
So are you, for your record, keeping that? Because we're still on item two. So.
My, my thought.
So we just need to go section by section and then just value what? So we can do it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
Was there anything else on that page?
Yeah, the human resources department, I would just have changed the HR representative. Um, throughout the handbook as well. So the last paragraph of the introduction. Um, so the HR department, but a lot of the departments do have representative within.
Do they all?
If they don't, then they report to the B O C C H R, and that's their HR representative.
I don't think that's true. I think it's like the officials that use B O C C H R.
Right, then that's their HR representative.
Can you pull that up?
So whoever that person may be, whether it's B O C C, the HR department, um, but some departments have just.
But the way it reads in the eight twenty-two, and I'll start with the last sentence. Should you have any questions regarding policies? Please ask your supervisor, elected officer, or the county human resources HR department for assistance. And Erin, please state what you were saying again.
And so my motion would be to remove HR, or the county HR department, and replace it with human resources and parentheses, HR representative.
And Brandon, if I heard you correctly, you were saying?
No, I misunderstood what she was saying.
Oh, okay.
So you don't want the word county in there either?
Right, so. Yeah, how it reads there.
So supervisor, elected officer, or HR representative.
Uh huh.
Is that a motion?
Yep.
And you're saying throughout?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how many pages do you guess? Is that on or is it just?
Um, it's throughout. I don't know how many pages it's on.
Okay. So throughout the document?
So just to be clear, the motion is literally just removing the county as it pertains in front of human resources.
So instead of referencing specifically, because it refers to the, the B O C C county's HR department, or sorry, the county's, or the B O C C's HR department.
It doesn't say B O C C though, does it?
Yeah, but the county human resources department, I think, refers to the B O C C's. So just to replace it with the HR representative and that will vary, I think, by department.
Two, is that a motion? Is there a second? Okay, there's a second. Discussion, anybody? Oh, you have a question?
I'm thinking. So an elected officer comes out as well or no?
No, we're not voting on that. It was just taking out the county HR department, replacing it with HR representative.
Are there some places in the document where it talks about county human resources department, then it would be specific to something that they would do and it wouldn't be kind of a general HR representative, it'd be something over there? I don't know what all the references in the document that mention county.
Not the.
Department.
Yeah.
There, there is one particular provision, like when you're trying to report maybe discrimination.
Yeah.
You would, if you wanted to go report it to the county HR, because you feel like you can't report it to internal jobs, go internal. There's that, but you can, you can, you can do this. And I mean, when you come to those particular ones, or you want to insert coming back in.
Uh huh.
You have the ability to do that.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll start out that way, and we're taking each page, so.
All right, well.
Paul, you good with that?
Okay.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we through page six?
At the bottom of page six, so with our recruitment and job postings section. Um, right now it reads, all job postings shall be posted publicly, and I would motion to um, adjust that to job openings, maybe posted public, publicly. Um, and then also adding in the department additive language there, so.
I, before we talk about that, I'm wondering, after I went back and looked at this again, I'm wondering why that's even in the employee handbook? Because if you're already an employee, why do you have to worry about recruitment and job posting? That seems like that's for somebody else, not somebody who's already an employee.
I mean, what about lateral transfers within the eight, within the county?
I don't, I mean.
Like in our department.
Just throw in that.
Yes, like in our department. You know, like, for example, I mean, when it says they should be posted publicly, I mean, if that means the outside, we're just simply not gonna do that. And the reason we won't do that is because, for example, we're not gonna hire somebody off the street who, like currently, let's say they work in the courthouse. And, you know, their goal is to be in a patrol position, or a school resource position, or a domestication position. We're not gonna hire somebody off the street to do that. We're, we're gonna open that internally only and let those people, I don't want to say the word promote, because it might be a lateral, but at least give them the ability to do other positions. And then we would backfill that from somebody to the public.
So in that case, you would not post that position publicly, it would only be internally?
Yeah, I mean, like, what would hap, yes.
Okay, okay.
What would happen in a, in a, in a district yard, for example, if you've got a, and I'm not gonna use right language, but let's say that you have a thirty-year truck driver, and all of a sudden you have a superintendent spot that's over there.
Or an equipment operator. You know, just moving up within the department.
Right.
Right. Right. Right, there are certain situations in which we would not. So, yes.
It, it seems to me like, and again, I don't want to use right language, I don't want to offend anybody, but it seemed like you would backfill a line staff.
Right.
You know, and then from public, and then let the.
Yeah, changing the shell to make.
Yeah, I mean, because, you know, we're not gonna do that.
Yeah, yeah, I could see that.
I mean, Lisa, I mean, how does this affect E O C?
It, it does, and that's the whole thing is when you get later on in this, um, until, any of the public who comes in and applies, there's the anti-discrimination statutes with regard to hiring, hiring and promotion. So recruitment notices, keeping it internal, or how you post it internal, may impact their rights, because they do, you know, later on, when you see the discrimination stuff, that applies to individuals who are not employees, but who have applied to the county. So this is where that information would be out there, unless it's to the public. And there are into times, like Brandon was talking about, not even that, but sometimes there's parts where, but how many people have gone from one division of county to another, like they worked for, uh, where it began and then now, or they work for, you know, where it's at, and now they're working for, um, where's the treat, that happens. And so, you know, internal posts, that becomes an important piece.
Okay, I just was wondering, I was like, do we need this? Because, you know, we're all already, if you're an employee.
Right, right.
And you need to worry about how that all happens.
Yes, the answer is yes. In, in HR, you have to worry about everything, sorry.
So, just to make sure, you're saying we need the declarative language show?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm not saying that at all, I'm just saying that recruitment and posting, um, is part of your HR policy.
That's what her question is.
All right.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept the changes to the recruitment and job posting section. But I've entered outside of section. And the, uh, this time it adds up on the screen. Could you scroll to?
Erin, you're changing show, main, right?
Correct. But that's not all, right?
Correct.
But if you are doing that, changing it from show to main, I don't think you would want the word all at the beginning, because all makes it like.
Yeah, I took out, I took out all.
Oh, okay.
So motion is to.
I see red and all. Okay, so just job openings, make it possible.
Correct. I'm, I'm driving this one, sorry. Okay. But your motion also includes the change that you made, adding department, or department.
Yes, yeah, you might want to strike through the all. Maybe you're right, it's just in where it looks like it has.
Oh, he sits on the front row of the movie theater.
Oh, there we go, yeah, just to pop it up bigger like that, there you go.
Guess he knows I'm lying.
And then just to confirm, you're also including the addition of the, by the department's HR representative?
Uh huh.
Uh, oh, hang on here, so. I, I, I don't know that that's something we can include in this, right? So the language says that applications submitted will be maintained by the department's HR representative for one year. Going back to our favorite topic, the B O C C document retention policy. Is that something we would put in here? Or is that something would have to go to the B O C C's department, uh, document retention policy?
This is law. This is, this is law. The, the retention, you need to, that is a, an HR law requirement from the, that you have to maintain.
Lisa, I think what he's getting at though is there's certain statutes. There's certain statutes that say you have to retain this particular type of.
For, for a longer period.
For however long. And we've been told by the DA's office and others that unless B O C C institutes a retention policy, that we're just having to hold on to stuff like this. It's where IP is holding.
Like we've got work, work for example, for people with it.
It has to be maintained up to, for one year. That is a requirement of statute.
Right, right.
So I don't think, I don't see this as a retention policy issue at all. You see what I'm saying? I mean, you have a, you know, so the B O C C needs a retention policy, they don't have it. If they have to keep that for longer, but I'm just saying, that's a requirement of law that has to, at least be kept for a minimum of one year.
I think what she's saying is this here is stating the statutory requirement.
Right.
But we're not gonna be able to follow the statutory requirement until we get a retention policy. So hopefully whoever's in charge in their HR department is not following this policy.
Yeah, well, because, yeah, it, it, because I think the lawyers agree this, it doesn't have a deeper context on that. They can get rid of it. They can get rid of it after a year.
They can, and by law, by federal law, they can, but by county, not having a retention policy, that's a problem. Didn't we hire an consultant?
I did.
To be doing, you know? I haven't heard anything.
It's a process.
Brandon, after one year dealing in parentheses after recognition. So once the records were taken.
Got about six so much.
You could say that, say up to one year, um, or, uh, person up to the county's retention policy, which ever longer.
There you go.
If you want, if you want language to cover it, that's a cover.
I don't necessarily care what language is in that regard, I just wanted to make sure didn't, it wasn't, um, conflicting with other opinions that we've gotten for the DA's office.
And like I said, I'm, I'm, I know that that sounds weird, but a retention policy is a retention policy. And what federal law, legal requirements and federal law, we have to, we have to let the employee know, or the potential candidate know how long we keep that.
But since there is no retention policy at this moment, that has adopted, should the language just be for a minimum of one year?
Yeah, it'll be fine.
Or a minimum.
Once it's adopted, we can change the one.
Over here, sixty-six days, I think it's going to this record.
Or you could say for up to one.
So.
What did you say, up to, because federal law requires it's a.
At least, at least one year.
Right.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, that's fine, I, I just wanted to make sure that it didn't conflict with previous, um, opinions we've got, I'm trying to get rid of our massive amount of paperwork that we have.
Okay.
Okay, so can I restate my motion to include, um, accepting changes to this recruitment slash job posting section? And with the addition of for a minimum of one year in that last sentence?
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any just more discussion? Thank you, Erin. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, I have that in my version, just to, you know, pass it on page six. Right here, I did the, carried over to page seven, but we'll.
Two, hiring procedures.
All right. Now we're on hiring procedures, which is page seven in the eight twenty-two. Prefer to pull up the eight twenty-two. Do we have that?
That's right, that's the one on the left.
Okay. I'm wearing my reading glass.
Sorry.
I'm trusting you all. See, in my version, it looks like this.
Yeah.
Repeat the page number.
All right. Everybody can look over on your eight twenty-two document. Page seven, it starts with hiring procedures, and it goes to policy against harassment or harassment, as I said, and discrimination and complaint procedure.
All right, so let me just ask, do you want just the eight twenty-two? And Erin's?
Oh, eight twenty-two, no, what about? And then when Erin reaches the section that she is going to change, we pull that. Erin, is that good? If, if we're on a page and you say, oh, I had some changes, that work for it.
Yeah, that does work, but, um, I don't want to also skip sections that maybe you didn't have changes to that. But if we're going section by section, that should be fine.
Okay. So which one is it up there?
The left, this one.
Okay, right.
Did you make changes to this since the last meeting? Is what you're saying?
Uh huh.
Since you sent out the.
Since the, since the last one that I sent out, he has made changes, yes. This is that one.
The five twenty-two document updated it on eight twenty-two. So any changes here?
Um, in hiring procedures?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I do have changes to that. Does everyone have the, the document that I attached to the agenda in so now?
Just tell us what agenda I didn't know.
Yeah, it's number nine, it's, it's like kind of, I'm gonna try to shuffle through each one of those.
Well, okay, so then that's why I had sent, correct, and that's why I had sent out a follow-up email.
Right.
It, because Legisstar doesn't recognize changes.
Right.
It just transfers it to a PDF.
Right, okay.
So then they accepted all of her changes and didn't actually let you know what she was trying to change.
Um, but I think like moving through, it's gonna be very difficult, or maybe just like read them all out loud. Like that's why I tracked them in the document. So I think, um, if you want to balance back and forth, then Cassie, I'll just ask you to pull up. Mine, okay.
I think she has.
Yeah, this, this one is yours.
On the other document, I'll just say that, that second sentence, you know, it starts with each elected official. And then the one that said the number of persons hired, that was deleted in that newer. And because for one, I just thought it seemed unnecessary, and the other, what it's saying there is we're gonna only hire. And it makes it sound like if we have the budget money, we're gonna hire somebody. It doesn't really refer to, do we need a?
It doesn't really refer to, do we need a new person or? Does, does our workload require a person? It's just like, if we got money, we're hiring somebody. But if we don't have money, we're not hiring somebody.
Well, there's a lot of employees that carry, they don't need to work on a bunch of corporation anyway, they run out of cash account.
So I, that sentence was taken away just because I was like, does this need to be in the handbook? Does your average employee need to know this or care? Um, so. That's a difference from what Erin has up there on the screen.
Yeah, I'm happy to add that.
Of employees serve the pleasure of the elected official, that's your out will employment, but you gotta have.
Yeah, yeah.
Can't not take it out, otherwise you're guaranteeing employment with your.
It is some kind of section.
Actually two other.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, uh, it's, it's not something under strike.
Would it not? Would we not want it under the hiring procedures? Even though it is in other places?
Um, I just remembered it's in the out while section and, um, it could stay. It will just be the third time that it's, um, reached out.
Yeah, it has been there a few times. At least it's short. Doesn't take up a lot of space.
Specific to hiring procedure.
I would think it would be essential to be listed. Absolutely, yeah, it, it needs to stay in this section.
It needs to be put in that section and in the termination section, for sure. What, if you're, you know, hiring, firing, that's where it needs to.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I will make a motion to remove that second sentence that Leanne said, that the number of persons hired, appointed. And so remove that, keep the employees serve at the pleasure of their elected official sentence in and accept the other changes that you see on the screen. Um, and then that last sentence, that was just copied, I copied and pasted it into the, um.
Recruitment and job postings.
It's a little confusing to me when you say, um, the next paragraph here. Do you have this one?
Yeah, um, so.
You said, I'll report to the H R representative for enrollment of the department's H R representative. Or enrollment and orientation are, is this, because you, each department may have their own orientation. But then the.
The county, the county orientation is conducted by the B O C C H R. Right, and the B O C C department's, uh, the H R representative is county H R. This is one of the examples of what I was talking about, not.
But that is their H R representative.
H R. But it's not their department representative, it's the general representative.
So can it, could it just read the, the H R representative?
I think with all, if I'm hearing, there's, it's like, for example, like we have our own orientation and then there's any other county that's. Go through, so you can enroll, you can sign up for your retirement, your benefits and all that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So like we do, like, so our employees do something maybe a little bit different. Or is this intended to be like a catch-all for all that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, not to take away that, like the benefits enrollment and all that, um. But just stating that it wouldn't necessarily be the county's, the elected officials, H R manager. Um, or county H R. So, um, my background, so I came from juvenile bureau, so I'm looking at this with the lens of that and over there. And they have an H R department who does all of the enrollment and orientation, um, so it's not. I mean, I guess from our conversation earlier, you could call that the elected officials, H R manager, but it's really the department's H R representative.
So juvenile, don't come over to the N E O?
They do, but it's just part of, like you said, probably how sheriff's office does it.
Yeah, okay.
So Erin, you're real quick, were you state duty or here? Yeah. Make it quick.
Then you even have the next sentence too. Is the employee responsible for submitting the new hire form or would the H R representative submit the H R? Submit the new hire form to the county clerk?
Addition of the H R.
All right, should be H R.
I, I guess the board, it was kind of unclear what the guidelines were from the old language, I'm, I'm unclear. Why we're wanting to change it because it talks about. At, at least in the red stripe, we'll report to elected officials, H R manager, which would cover. The departments other than the O C C departments and. I mean, so that covers elected officials, H R internal. The elected officials, H R manager or county H R office representative, I, I think that covered all your bases.
There are some departments that seem that the new hire reporting form themselves and don't send it.
I mean, they submit it themselves to who?
The new hire report. That's what you're talking about, the new hire form, are you talking about?
Um, I'm talking about the information that, um, new employees have to submit to be set up in the payroll system.
Okay.
Like get their employee number, have access to time and attendance, all those things. So there is an actual form they submit to the, our payroll department.
That H R does.
Yeah, probably. Just keep in mind, this is a big umbrella, so this is, it, what the county, if the county has an, if, if each employee is supposed to go to county H R.
Mm-hmm.
For an orientation, that's what that's supposed to be.
Yes.
If the department has their own orientation, that's a separate sentence and say, this is a requirement in addition to any requirements your elected department head has orientation.
Correct, so would it be report to the department's H R representative and. The B O C C H R department. Cause they're gonna get orientation from both.
I'm not even sure, I, I don't even know with the, any of those, like twenty years, I haven't been through one, so. I mean, what does it even entail? If you, it's where you sign up for, you elect benefit coverage, right? You sign up for retirement. Or, you know, get on that plan.
Correct.
It's where they give it right now.
A hundred and forty-two page change, but.
And it is, all of your retirement, um, I call it that, safety precautions.
Good.
That there's mandatory safety training in the afternoon.
Trying to say yeah, flag, okay, I mean, like, all that stuff, that's okay. I need to reword this paragraph. Well, so I guess, let me ask this, is every, does every employee go through that? Regardless where they come from, whether from this elected official, that elected official.
Yeah, they're supposed to.
Okay, right.
That's what this is for, they're supposed to.
Okay.
The taking out county H R, which is who puts that on, you take that language out and then it almost makes it like.
Correct.
That's not it anymore. I'm just trying to get it, it's all.
How about two sentences, all new employees shall report for county H R. Training and fill out a new hire form. This. Orientation is in addition to whatever. Orientation your elected or department.
Right, so we just say that all new employees are required to go through the employee orientation. That's conducted by.
That's conducted by the county H R.
Kind of by the H R department, yeah. I, and, but I'm just saying, if you are concerned for employee information, that they might have to go to one for their employee or the county, it's two sentences.
I mean, I agree with whoever said it, um, uh, yeah, I mean, cause ours is, when I say orientation, I mean, ours is, you know, you take the oath, do some other other things, it just. Won't happen at another department most likely, so, yeah, I mean, we're not doing something reverse of what the county does or signing up.
No, you're doing it in addition to.
It's in addition to, right.
Because there, I think, we're some of the, for enrollment and orientation, we're some of the enrollment in benefits. And that's not done by the department, you know, or elected officials, H R. It, it's just not, it's done through the benefits department and that's part of the county. H R department's enrollment, uh, enrollment orientation process. So probably should be.
All new, all new employees shall. Report to. The county H R department for enrollment and orientation. In addition, this may be. This may be in addition to your individual.
Individual.
Is, is the, does any go, any of go through Karen or should go through Wilkerson?
Both.
I thought it was Wilkerson.
It, it's both, they, they do a, a joint deal, so like health and safety and human resources. So they'll do like the handbook stuff and all of that from the H R side, and they'll do some health and safety stuff. And then Wilkerson will do the benefits.
Okay. And then the last sentence. Uh, your H R representative shall submit the new hire form to the county clerk's payroll department.
I would send you higher paperwork.
You have to be more than one.
It's just, it's just one.
One.
That we.
Just the one.
But there's a social security.
Yeah, there's a lot more than that.
Or.
Right.
Federal, state.
Mm-hmm.
Payroll.
And new hire documents. Yes, there's one, 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 one that we set up.
Who's prepared to make a motion?
We have one.
Oh, we didn't?
Don't you?
Don't know what it is. Yep.
Yeah.
No, I think you should make a motion on what you said.
Let's see if I can remember.
So you need to withdraw your motion? Before you say your motion, I noticed you said your in there somewhere. One of the things that I noticed that often is you decide if you think this is a big deal or not. Most of it is written in like a third person, like the employee shall blah blah blah. Every once in a while, it says you should blah blah blah, like it's speaking directly to the person reading it. But then most of the time, it's like, the employee shall do this. My, you know, to me, it should all be the same, it's probably not a big deal, it's just a thing that bugs me. But do we want it to be a third-person document or a second-person document?
Yeah, I think it needs to be a third-person document and be consistent throughout.
Okay. So you may have to reword what you just.
All right. Make a motion that that paragraph.
Hmm.
That.
I, I need a motion.
Okay, well, okay.
You know, yeah.
Make a motion that the second paragraph under, or third paragraph, under hiring procedures. State. That all new employees shall. Report to the county H R department for enrollment and orientation. Let her get this down first. Okay. Uh. In addition. There may be. Report this, in addition, there may be.
Instead of in addition, you say.
There may be additional.
There, each county elected official or department may have additional orientation requirements that the employee must.
Specific to their.
Also attend specific to their.
But.
Specific in addition to orientation each department.
It's all.
Okay, where, where you going?
This is gonna be like pause and break, pause.
Each county elected official or department.
Has, may have additional. Orientation requirements the employee must satisfy.
There you go.
That's your motion, Paul?
I'm not done.
Also.
Uh. Yeah, just. Okay, the department's H R representative. Shall submit new hire documentation. To the county clerk's payroll department. For enrollment as a county employee in the. Just like.
Kathy, are you satisfied? You're being, okay, that's your motion, Paul, it's, or a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There was a strike through, Erin, applicants and employees will be required to demonstrate their eligibility to work in the United States if provided by federal and state law, she struck through.
Um, I copied and pasted it into the recruitment and job posting section. So just the section of that. Um, I think it'd be very good place.
A once isn't a much thing.
Yeah, but it would be.
Okay. Uh. In order to make sure that we, we get in that section.
I, I think similar to what was discussed earlier on the employees or the elected official, if they're only in that one place, in the hiring procedures would probably be the place.
Yeah. And termination.
Yeah.
Termination is really important.
Cause that, that I'm, I'm just part of your.
Okay.
So just leave it as it is.
Yeah, we're gonna leave it for. Okay, you okay with that, Erin?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Um, I do want to quickly say, I, in, in her motion, she did have. Um, to, she had added to remove the sentence that Leanne had also suggested, the number of persons hired, et cetera. One.
No, no, no.
Oh, the number of persons hired or. No, no. Action was undertaken.
Uh-huh.
Erin, make that motion.
Okay, I motion that the second sentence in the hiring procedures section, the number of persons hired or appointed should be based on the budget appropriation of the fiscal year. Which the hiring slash appointment is made. Motion that that sentence just be stripped.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Right.
Thank you, Kathy.
Uh, Brandon, it's ten thirty, brother, you need to leave.
Eleven.
Okay, all right.
I've got a ten forty-five stop.
Get to scroll on down to vote against.
Bless you.
Restment, discrimination, complaint procedure. Page seven.
There.
Page seven on the eight twenty-two document.
That does, it's over here.
It's on the left.
The, yeah.
Let's just. No, stop on the right, let's see. That highlighted deal. It's, I can't read that, the following something.
The following are some examples of. You know the.
I don't remember why those things were.
I was the, how do I say?
I pulled right up full screen.
The following are some examples of conduct which may be legally actionable sexual harassment. Okay, that, that's probably highlighted by me because everybody knows how much I love examples, and that's, I guess. So, you know, you, you can tell people and teach them how to sexually harass somebody by putting examples in there. Or you can just take it out and put the cards filed, but you can either add, add them up with them, but. I don't like examples in policy manuals, they're not necessary. And they're not necessary, they give people suggestions and ideas and, uh, create more trouble in litigation in their work, but.
Let's not create more trouble.
This, this was actually in the. This, this was actually in the, the echo one. That's why I left it. But this is a policy decision for you guys. And we have had ad nauseam, uh, lots of examples in our hundred and ten sixteen page manual. Um, but I've always been an advocate of taking them out. If they're not necessary and the law does not require them.
Then why want to make that motion?
Can I take the examples up? The examples. We're trying to.
Ball's got a motion, is there a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Thank you.
I'm happy.
I tried to listen. I didn't miss one.
We may have a fifty-five page here, but folks.
Um, anything in the section before, or a couple of paragraphs before the examples? Did we, I didn't remember, Erin, did you have? And I was, I had one little thing, again, of those review. The very last sentence in that whole thing before the, uh, or did I already move that? I'm, I'm losing track of my copies here. The very last minute said sex discrimination and sexual harassment are against the law, right before the examples started. Which I moved to the very beginning because I thought, ah, that's like right here.
Is this what you did?
And, and the one on the right.
I'm sorry.
Before the examples. The one on the right, right here. Well.
Talk about moving that sentence to the beginning of the paragraph?
Yeah. Yeah, I just put that at the very beginning because I thought, why is that at the very end?
Oh, I see. I see that you did.
We're gonna talk about this. But thanks. Sexual discrimination is against the law.
Yeah.
So I just moved it to the very beginning. Um.
Well, it's good to start off strong.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, well, we're gonna have that, it probably doesn't mean in.
Come out of the D P O.
Uh huh, uh huh. So this sentence is what she said.
Yeah, she moved immediately to the very person. It's in the very last.
So is that a motion to move?
Yes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
All right.
All right. Motion carried. Thank you, we have.
Sure, the chair's the problem.
Get into Joe, he shows back up.
This is, uh, starting to go back. This is one of the sections because it's talking about sexual harassment for reporting requirements. But you may want them to have the ability to also report to county HR. You see what I mean by where your amendment to take it out in every context might, this might be the one where you want to add it back in.
Right.
Where is that exactly?
Um, uh, it's probably the paragraph.
Oh, just below the example.
Right. Um, like I said, it normally that would work with like when you have people reporting, especially with the HR manager or some elected is the the one doing the harassment, you might want to give them as many options for reporting as possible.
Yeah, I agree. The one I have pulled up now is Erin's document. I just wanted to go ahead and let everybody know which one we have pulled up.
Yep. So our department's stance is going to be for it to be a department HR representative. Or appropriate elected official. Or really, it should be, um, if you elect an official over the department. Is our department's stance on it?
I think what Lisa's getting to is there could be situations where in a department, if it involves a higher person or individual or elected official, the individual may not be comfortable going to the HR representative that also reports to the person that you're complaining about. So this gives an opportunity for that individual to go outside of that HR environment to the county's HR.
And let me go and put it in by the E O C. They're gonna point to this as an example of the county saying, well, I didn't have a remedy. They will, they will point to this manual and say, I was not given a remedy. The person who was harassed and he was who I was supposed to report to, and I knew they weren't anything about it, so I didn't have to go through the administrative process or investigation. And then that will create, this will create more litigation than it's worth. By o- offering it. I understand what you're talking about. I get the elected officials wanting that control. The problem is with that control comes the liability. So it's up to you. I'm just telling you the weighing, the pros and the cons of that. And if that's the risk that you're willing to accept for us to be in E O C litigation, then I will happily defend.
Yeah. I was about to, been here a few years, seeing where somebody had to go outside their department and report to another elected official. So, um. We need to make sure that employees have that. So Erin, in your version. You're striking. I'm reading this. From the eight twenty-two version. It's in the second paragraph. Oh, it's up there. However, if an employee feels he, she has been subjecting from harassment, discrimination, and unfair treatment, the employee should properly report. If you're supervisor, you have a member of the provision. Elected official, HR manager, county HR director, or member of the Bard County Commissioners. Department's HR or. I've seen them go to the chairman's office. I've seen them go to another office. Chair. But they need that option. It's what I'm hearing from you.
Yeah, you can caveat it, you know, you bet I, there's a danger in that as well. You could say, if the, if, if the individual you are complaining about is in your supervisor chain or is the official you, at that time, you can go outside to another. You want to, you know, make it a condition that they have to report it internally unless who they are reporting to is the ones that they're complaining about. Then you can go, but like I said, the danger in that, there's danger in that too, but it's at least kind of a compromise.
Yeah, but there's, but I mean, if you're gonna caveat pre and tour, I mean, you're, you're opening up situations that you're not even contemplating. I mean, I'm just sitting here thinking, if I work for an elected official and I'm in the I T department for that elected official, and the, the harassment is coming from my I T supervisor in this chain, but I don't want to go to the HR manager over here and complain internally because maybe we've structured it in our department that the I T manager is also the supervisor of this per, or the I T manager supervises the HR department as well as part of the job. And so I don't want to go complaining because then the HR manager reports to this person, even though I don't. It just.
Or even, even they, they go to lunch every day. They're the best, they're best friends. The person I have to report to is best friends, you know, with the person that I'm, the HR manager is best, goes to lunch every day and is best friends. I'm never gonna get anywhere. Like, those are the scenarios that that is designed to protect against. You can add caveats, like, I'm just giving you those options. You can add caveats, but there's risks involved in doing that. But I want you to know that you have A B C options.
The, this is kind of a little bit different segment, but now I made myself a note. After her red markings there for management, the very next sentence, the person. The person that harassment or discrimination is reported to will take the necessary steps to initiate an investigation of the discrimination and or harassment claim. And I just got to thinking, do all of these people that we listed in this paragraph have the training and the knowledge and do they know that that's part of their responsibility and how to do all of that? I got to thinking, what, you know, what if somebody came to one of those people and they were just like, I don't know what I'm supposed to do about this?
Talk to the county HR department and take guidance. But the thing is, is that is the paragraph that puts them on note.
Notice, it's, it's. So they just need to know.
This is the employee path policy manual that says, if you're a supervisor, if somebody comes to you and reports it, it's, it's kind of the same thing with reporting child abuse, or if somebody comes to you with something, see something, say something. If somebody reports it to you, you should probably.
You gotta figure out.
Figure out how to, which next step is.
Even if they haven't been trained on it, this is kind of what, you know, is your job.
Well, and I think the training is simply reporting. So that there's your training.
That is your responsibility.
That's your responsibility is to report it. And to report it to somebody who is trained and, uh, and be, that, that elected official or that person can call county HR. They can call the DA's office. We've gotten those on occasion, requests for little services. Hey, we thought, what can we do?
So should the handbook state that the supervisor is required, like they're aware of a situation, that they are required to assess like the situation? Does, is that?
It says the employee shall.
Re- report this. And, but, you know, like.
Say it's the supervisor becomes aware of the situation.
They observe it and it's not reported to them?
Or like a different employee report?
Well, I, here, here's, and I think we've had, Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, we had this in the past where somebody observes something and reported it. Then HR goes to that person and says, this has been an observation. Would you like to make a report? And if they say no, you've fulfilled your duty. They are not officially bothering you, complaining or asking for an investigation. You were able to document that you knew about something. You went to them, you gave them the opportunity to report. It is obviously that person's prerogative whether or not they reported and want action to be taken or not. Maybe that person doesn't want to proceed. Or maybe what you observed or thought you saw was not correct. So, like I said, the, the duty is to report, but if something is brought to your attention and then reported to you. But I'm not, I, I'm not advocating everybody go out and be watching and looking and reporting every little rumor either.
Erin, I, I think what I'm understanding you, I'm checking what you're thinking here. This is contemplating, if somebody comes and finds you, like, I've got a situation going on, you now have a duty to report to them. But I think what your concern is, if I haven't come and told you about this, you see something happening to me, should we put something in here? Or is it duty since you've observed it for you to report? Is that kind of what you're getting at?
Right, or like certain supervisors or elected officials or past needs, like if there are a duty to report, um,
I don't think it is, it is a duty to report.
No.
Okay.
Uh, your mandatory duty is when somebody comes to you as a supervisor and says, this person is discriminating against me, this person is harassing me, this person is, and I'm not, and everybody uses the term harass, you know, bullying, job working, bullying and harassment, those are not. Harassment is a specific defined term and it's dealing with sexual harassment. There, just because a supervisor is asking me to be on time and asking you to do your work is not harassment or bullying. It's like, should you have very strongly worded, no, that is not bullying. But, and bullying is not a cause of action under the law. Okay, it's something we don't want to happen. But we're not gonna get in the weeds of dictating everything. This is ten thousand foot level. And it's gonna be case by case basis. That's what supervisors are supposed to go through supervisory training. There's plenty of HR courses that you can get taught to your supervisors. Oh, Carrie Moreland-Lard, she's got a list of, of great H R sources for supervisors that are free online sources that you can, she can refer you to. And you can always call legal if you have a, a question. But I don't think that you need to, the law does not require, this is what the law requires. That's why it's, so we're not trying to go into the weeds and give every example. It's just, you know, and if you're training your supervisors up, you can get them more specific training on how to deal with personal elements of what you're talking about.
Okay, so you're saying it's not.
It's not requiring. No, I think, they're, they're, well, you know, I can't say, I can't say that. I mean, I'm not gonna say there's this, there's this thing in law. You can't, it's the ostrich effect. You can't purposely ignore something that's right in front of your brain. It's called willful ignorance. You can't be willfully ignorant of a situation. You know, if you purpose, if you walk into a room and see it happening, even if it's not reported to you, that's a difference.
But I think those are the situations, but.
Well, but the thing is, is, well, okay, I, I. Well, that is, you know, to me, that's gonna be what you're gonna train your supervisor on. That's supervisory training. That's not that, I mean, the law require, that, that's their liability. I mean, they're personally liable for that too. They're the supervisor chained and chained, and they see and observe something and they don't address it.
I think back to like what she was saying. This is kind of where you're telling Erin what you said.
Well, but I'm not, it's not a training, it's not a training manual, it's personal policy manual. Training manuals are separate. And I went in, uh, I think I, I can't remember whose, who, who it was. I just recently said this to, in a memo. I was like, look, you have a personal, you can't have a personnel policy, but you can have training manuals. You can have training manuals to train your supervisors on what to do in these situations. Training and training manuals are separate than policy.
Sure, I'm just thinking across the board, if you want supervisors to act in a certain way, then this would be the place to include, like, any legal duty to report. Or like not be willfully ignorant.
Right. Well, like I said, to me, I'm leaving that to each elected official to the degree that they want to address that in their own training of their own supervisors. Because, yeah, I mean, I think it's, it, sexual harassment is against the law. It's not to be tolerated in the county. I don't know if that tells, if, if so, if you're a supervisor and you can't read through the lines, that means you're, if you see something, you're supposed to do something about it. I mean, I, I, I don't want to get in the weeds of saying every little detail to train a supervisor in a policy manual. Training and policy are two separate things. I'm not telling, I'm not telling the treasurer, I haven't got to the county commissioners, how they train or not.
Another babysitter?
You can call me and ask me for, for resources. I'll be happy to get to you, but I'm not gonna tell you how to train.
All right. So. That leaves us with. Erin, understand your intent, but I think.
Yeah, one more thing that I'll say on that, just for, um, thought and processing is like if a V O C C employee was in that same situation that we're talking about with like reporting or didn't feel comfortable reporting to a certain party, like they wouldn't have another level of HR to go to. So I think that's the thought with other offices that do have an HR representative.
I think the difference, though, is that the V O C C HR doesn't answer to one elected official. Correct. All the other HR departments answer to one elected official. That, that's kind of where it is a little bit different. But if something is happening within a V O C C department or a V O C C office, and they're not comfortable going to county HR or through their channel, they can still go to another elected official. It's allowed for in here. It's just they wouldn't go to that other elected official, HR department. They would go to that other elected official. And that elected official could then bring their HR folks in to help them weed through the process. But that's really the difference with county HR, because it doesn't answer to one elected official.
And a lot of times in those types of situations too, this is part of the training, this is not part of the manual. The DA's office has, we have hired outside independent. The DA's office has, we have hired outside independent investigators that we have hired to investigate, so it's not even county HR reports to those VOCC members doing the HR investigation. We have policy, we already have procedures in place, and that take care of this on a case by case basis. So if they are allowed to report it to another elected official, elected official says, we need to investigate another elected official, county HR ain't doing that, we're hiring that out to an independent that's no, that's not under somebody's stuff, it's not, they're a contractor and they're paid, but they are not subject to that influence.
So.
I still like the changing of everyone to employees.
Yes.
I don't know if it's all lumped together.
Yeah. Um, to me, supervision and management are interchangeable.
Yeah, I just put management because it states management in other places, so for consistency, let's just bounce around terms.
All right, so, who wants to make a motion to say we're gonna change everyone to employees? And we're gonna change supervision to management. Go ahead, Paul, make that.
Supervision to management.
In the middle, bottom third, ending member, supervision. One, two, three, four, five, send it to them. Look at it on the board. You see it?
Yep. Paul, should the elected officials, HR manager or county HR director, should that be?
We're, we're leaving everything in, just changing everyone to employees. To change.
Our board of county commissioners. So board of commissioners.
Thank you.
Said board of commissioners should be board of county commissioners.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, I think that would be dropped out.
Yep.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so that's your motion, sir?
Yes.
Right, is there a second?
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion Erin, thank you. Brandon, it's about time for you to leave.
In close.
Um, I know. Yeah, I was just gonna, I'm leaning that way. Uh, it's about lunchtime for sun. Uh, would you guys like to meet tomorrow, what you said, nine thirty? Can everybody come back?
Does the FCC. You can't, it's down, even Brandon leaves, we have five.
Yeah, I know, and, and so, we can come back tomorrow, or we can stay, or we can break for lunch, come back as available this afternoon.
Is, is tomorrow's VOCC long? Have you, I've not looked at.
It's not by really long, there is the executive session items.
You think you'd be done by nine thirty, nine forty-five?
I hate to meet.
Maybe nine.
Yeah, and, everybody keep in mind, we're but, we're taking one bite of the elephant at a time.
We're gonna be meeting.
Yeah. And so, this is not all gonna be done in one afternoon, it's not, all gonna be done tomorrow morning. We're, we're gonna be deliberate, and we're gonna let everybody have their say. And so, we're just gonna bite real pieces off, if you go along. So we can meet either later on today, or tomorrow morning until we get to ten thirty.
Ten thirty, I believe. I, I can be here twelve, twelve thirty tomorrow.
Did he wanna say one thirty?
Maybe do that.
Yeah, perfect. Oh.
One thirty?
Okay. Erin?
But I can be here twelve thirty tomorrow as well, that's helpful. I know what time.
I like one thirty.
Okay, but. I don't know about Brandon, he's got logs.
I bring, you know, we all have enough stuff going on in our department. All right, what I'll do, did we vote on that, we did vote on it?
There, there's no motion, or, or do you mean the?
What, we just quit polls?
Yes, yes, you did vote on that.
All right, let's have a motion to recess until one thirty tomorrow.
I'm moving.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you all, you guys had a great, I'm gonna reach out.